Okay, it looks like the six o'clock time has arrived, so we will officially call the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to order. And our first item is to have roll call. Mari Sel, if you do that, please.
Commissioner Vanderstark.
Present.
Commissioner Kapalongo.
Present.
Commissioner Pro.
Present.
Vice Chair Adam.
Here.
Chairman Frost.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, and if I may, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have a call to the public. By way of explanation, the call to the public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And with that, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to address the commission? Online, do we have anybody raising their hand?
We have one.
Okay. And sir, I saw you raise your hand, and we'll have the...
After the presentation.
Well, have you come up here in just a minute and state your name and address, and then we'll give you three minutes. But I think she's getting ready to pull up someone who's online that's raised their hand as well, so we'll have them go first, and then we'll invite you up.
Can you hear us, Mrs. Mariures?
Yes, I can. So, thank you for this time. My goodness, Florence, we are getting bombarded with a bunch of high-density housing, aren't we? And we, the residents, are questioning often what about our roads, what about our infrastructure? And I intend to speak during the public hearing as well, but Langley, this 287 project is going to bring fifteen to about forty thousand people. Holy cow. Are we ready for this? Are our roads ready for this? Why is Florence wanting to continue to work with such a big projects and approve these huge projects at one time rather than in smaller increments? We fought this back in the early 2000s and have been struggling for weeks with many problems that were caused, and I just foresee lots of problems coming with all this stuff that's heading our way now that you guys are dealing with. So, this farmland has been farmed for many years. Is anybody looking into the toxicity with the land, with the crop dusters, the nitrates, all that stuff? It's going to become yards, people are going to be playing in them. I am highly opposed to approving such a huge project at one time for our small little town. Our roads cannot handle any of this stuff right now. We have the Ataway crossings, they had a neighborhood meeting, I would have loved to have gone, but I don't live within three hundred feet of that project. Is the Town of Florence considering raising that to, you know, people within, you know, five miles, one mile, something other than just three hundred feet? Because these projects involve our entire town, not just the few scattered neighbors that are on these outskirts where these developments are coming. I also feel it's time for a change for the general plan. I don't think our little community can handle any more high-density housing as what we are being presented with lately. We need retail and employment, that's what we need, we don't need more high-density housing right now, we need jobs. What else? The parks. Are any of these, I didn't see anything in those documents where all these parks in this 287 project would be open to all the Town of Florence, just the HOA people that live there. I think it's important to open these parks up to everybody, if they're going to be coming into our town, we should all be able to use the parks. There was a spot I saw that something about the provisions of the PUD will prevail over Town Codes, is that true with these projects? I'm probably going on my three minutes, but we need to be wise with what we're doing with the growth of our town. Scary what's happening, forty thousand people with this one project is very scary.
If you can still hear me, that was the three minutes, so it turned off. Okay, is there anyone else online? Is that the only one that raised their hand? I think so. No, I'm sorry, online, online they have that option to raise their hand as well, I think we only had one person online that wanted to comment, right?
Yes, there's no one else online.
Please come up. Please state your name and where you live, and you have your three minutes.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Preston Gordon, I live on Loma Linda Lane here in Florence. I am here because of the initial meetings more than a year ago with the new owners of the property, I discussed several issues with them. We requested right away to our address on Loma Linda Lane that had been allowed for more than sixty years. At this meeting, we also discussed and later met on-site about purchasing a couple of acres to provide access to our properties, and we're told then that that should not be a problem. The agreed access location has been staked out. To date, there has been no progress on either option, and I've been unable to get any response to my inquiries for the last eleven months. Collector A, location concerns, it's located right, it's shown on the map that we received in the mail that it's located right on our property line, and it's about a hundred feet from my door, my front door. The collector would have a significant amount of traffic, being a main access to 287, for thousands of homes being planned to the north and east. The road grade off of Adamsville will be significant in that location, it's about a sixty-foot climb and two hundred feet or so. The location shown is on our property's primary runoff ditch that would affect the runoff and subsequently our two wells on those properties. This being the main road also increases the risk of contamination of our wells. Changing the zoning of the property next to our homes from residential to commercial and the location on the Collector Road shown along our property line will significantly reduce our property value. It also appears there may be a utility right-of-way along that western property line, which is right on the Collector Road. In summary, I request the Collector entrance from Adamsville be located at the existing Loma Linda Lane entrance, proceeding the least expensive, shortest route to what appears to be Mayfield Road, and granting us right-of-way at a convenient location to our existing access. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Very well stated, thank you. And since that's on the agenda this evening, we'll actually be able to have the applicant talk to us about that, so thank you for being here. Anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Okay, we will close call to the public. Now, our next agenda item is discussion, approval or disapproval of the minutes from the regular meeting conducted on February 1st. Commission members, any concerns, comments, edits? I had one. Mari Sel, on page four of six, the very top paragraph there, it says that, I stated there's a possibility of a parallel water utility along the line along the western boundary in order to preempt the need for heavy construction of a wastewater line. There's a lot of the right words there, but they kind of got scrambled in the wrong way, so I have an amendment for you, and I'll just read that, and then I'll give it to you after the meeting, if that's okay?
Yes.
And what I hopefully was trying to say is Chair Frost suggested the possibility of constructing a wastewater force main, parallel to this project's proposed force main, to serve properties to the west of this project. This would help avoid roads, et cetera, being torn up in the future to install the force main. So I'll give you that verbiage when we leave, and I think that conveys what I was trying to say versus what's in the draft minutes. So with that amendment, I will move for approval of the minutes from the February 1st meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of February 1st, 2024, with the correction as stated by the chair.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by me and a second by Chair Adam. By Chair Adam, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair Adam made the motion. Commissioner Vanderstark, second.
Well, I made the motion, I thought. Didn't you second it?
I made the motion.
Oh, okay. Cool.
So just...
We'll back up. I was trying to make a motion, but we got twice, and I'll go that way, that sounds the easier way to do it. Vice Chair Adam made the motion, Commissioner Vanderstark, second, and all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, we got it. Okay. Item six, old business. An item, sub item A, presentation approval, approval with conditions or denial of design review reapproval for home products at the Western Crossings by D.R. Horton. Mari Sel, do you have a staff presentation on this one?
Yes.
Before we begin, can I ask a technical question? Just kind of for understanding. What is the town standard on duplication of elevations? Like, can the same elevation, same pattern be done across, kitty-cornered?
So it's...
What's the standards on that?
Not next door or across from one another.
Okay.
That's what we have for this design review.
And that's town standard, basically, across the board?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we've done for other communities.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Western Crossings, they had a home design review that came back in October of 2022. The design review was only good for a year and then expired back in October of 2023. Now that the roadway, offset roadway improvements are coming to a completion, they're looking to get the homes and the models built. But with that, they needed to bring back the design review. Nothing's changed, it'll still be the same homes that I brought back previously, and they'll be for both phases. The home builder is still D.R. Horton, and there's still two hundred and seventy-two lots. They're looking at the same twelve different floor plans with three different elevations each. All of the homes will be single-story, and there are sixteen different color schemes. In the packet, it's listed out all the different elevations and floor plans within, as well as what the color schemes will be shown throughout the community. And as we've put in that they have stated in their letter that they will not build the same home elevation color combination next door or across from one another. Home sizes, we're looking at about one thousand two hundred and seventy square feet to two thousand and fifty-one square feet. Architectural projections and detailing is on all elevations. There's varied concrete roofing styles and colors. They will be ground-mounted mechanical equipment, and accents such as stone veneers and decorative siding will be part of these homes. There will definitely be a variation of raised panel garage doors styles per that elevation, and then there will be also recessed garages to emphasize the porch areas and the living areas first. There are stucco pop-outs and around the windows, doorways, vents, some of the garages on the front side in rear elevations. So they have three different garage door styles I have here shown, as well as in each of those group colorings, they have what the color is called, where it's going to go, and then what type of material they'll have on those veneers or sidings for the houses. Stated previously, there are sixteen different color schemes. The home elevations mostly use what's seen around town, those tans, grays, browns, and off-whites. These are pretty standard when you're looking not only in some of the older developments within town, but also the newer ones. They will be accented, though, by some more pop-out colors such as blue, green, red, and yellow, and those will mostly be on doorways. This variation of color does help provide some distinguishing parts and provides options for those looking to buy. D.R. Horton also included some landscape packages, and they each at least have a tree as well as some shrubs that go in the front. They will be an irrigation system in these front areas, and they will use granite as, instead of turf, for the putting down in the front. Since nothing has changed from the previous approval or from the previous design review, staff finds that the request is in compliance with applicable Town Development Codes as well as what's found with the PUD, and provides a quality place to live. The Planning and Zoning Commission may move to reapprove, approve with the conditions, or deny the design review application for PZ 2233. In the staff report, we do have a list of conditions that we had brought that first time around. Are there any questions?
Commission members, any questions?
No questions here.
Okay. If the applicants here, did they want to say anything? I think we've seen this before, so... Nope, we're good, okay. Okay, we can entertain a motion now on this item.
I'll make a motion that we approve with the conditions as stipulated by Town Staff, PZ 22-23.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Kapalongo for approval with conditions on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that was five of us voted aye. Mari Sel?
Thank you.
Six B, presentation and public hearing, recommendation of approval, approval with conditions or denial of the Florence 287 Planned Unit Development. And this would be to recommend it to council, so... What was that, Mari Sel?
Florence 287 is a PUD that was applied for. We do have a map here to show more or less where it's at in our current, and what, some PUDs that are nearby. The RA4 zoning that you see on this map is more or less where PUD is looking to be proposed, and then next door you have several others. And then, of course, to the north, you have Adamsville and other pieces of land. But the site itself is shown on this vicinity map, as well as the north-south three-way corridor that'll be running nearby, as listed out by ADOT at this time. The Florence 287 PUD is rezoning for an approximate of one thousand five hundred and ninety-five acre. It is going to be a master-planned community. Its previous name was Florence Center, but the applicants decided to change it to Florence 287. The PUD outlined has a maximum of seven thousand five hundred and seven dwelling units, and the gross density is four point seven one dwelling units per acre. This development plan is looking at including commercial, multifamily, high-density, single-family, and then just regular lower-density single-family as well. The goal of this rezoning is to go from rural agricultural RA4 to a PUD. This is to expand what uses can be allowed, as well as to set requirements for the development of that community. Those who have applied and are working with this PUD are Hilgarth Wilson and Langley Properties. And they held a neighborhood meeting at the community center on December 14th, 2022. They've also been working with landowners, which includes Stacy Brimhall. Planning and Zoning Commission did review and discuss this in a general work session on January 18th, 2024, and comments and questions were received then. Today is a public hearing and a recommendation, so once comments and questions and kind of wrap up, then we can move on into a public hearing where we can also reply on what's been discussed. In terms of what we found, the proposed use is consistent with the Town of Florence General Plan. The PUD listed what was within, what they were meeting in terms of our general plan, and it meets the designations that were set, such as neighborhood, suburban, innovative district, and open space. They have access to the sites from State Route 287 and as well as Adamsville. The PUD will add more housing and commercial opportunities, but this will help support the residential needs of Florence. The request has been reviewed several times and edited so as to better reflect the interest in general welfare of the public. The request, and I just, number five is pretty much the same deal, we have been working with stipulations, and they are set in the staff report at the very beginning, and Florence 287 has been agreeable with these stipulations. I will now ask the representatives to come up and give their presentation. Yeah. It's all right, it'll go away.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners, nice to see you again. Jennifer Ruby with Langley Properties. For the record, my address is 2738 East Guadalupe Road in Gilberta, Arizona, 85234. I'm here tonight to represent Langley Properties, as well as our co-owner, our partner, the Comena Group. We jointly own this project, as well as several other projects in the town, so we're very much looking forward to being in front of you over a long period of time. This is just the first one. We did the study session, as you all know, we want to thank you very much for your time with that. We found it very valuable, we took your feedback back, made some revisions to the PUD, so Carolyn is here again tonight to talk through that, the technical. We also have the rest of the technical team again, so we can talk water, sewer, traffic, drainage, any questions you have. We recognize that you have a fairly robust agenda tonight, and since you are all here in attendance for the study session, we've tried to keep it brief, but please, we're here to answer questions, we wanted to try to save the time for that, since you all are relatively familiar. We also wanted to take a minute and thank staff. They have been fantastic, we're really excited to have Larry back, as everyone is, we might have done some arm twisting, so that's great, and Mari's been fantastic to work with. Getting the stipulations and being able to go through those, you know, in advance of being in front of you was really a great experience. It doesn't always unfold that way, so we appreciate staff's effort on that as well. With that, I will turn it over to Carolyn for the technical, and again, the team is here for anything you need. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jen, Marcella, and staff. Chairman, Commissioners, Carolyn Oberholzer again, for your records, 4343 East Camelback with the law firm of Bergen Frakes Smalley and Oberholzer. As Jen mentioned, we really appreciate your feedback, I do have a few changes to go through that resulted from the feedback that we got in January, and can, of course, dive into any of the other details that we did review. I'll just go right into the slides if I can remember how to do this. Next, please. Oh, Mari, I need some help. Does the clicker work? Thank you. Oh, yes, that works much better. Okay, so we went through the project site, just to touch back again on the three designations in the general plan amendment, pardon me, in the general plan, this does not require an amendment. This is, again, the voter-approved general plan, the blue color represents the innovation district, the red is the highway mixed use, and the suburban neighborhood that makes up the bulk of the property is the tan color. Within that category, there are both single-family attached and detached uses permitted, and the highway mixed use and innovation district both allow for a complement of business and retail uses as well as residential, with the innovation district allowing less residential density than the highway mixed use. And I just wanted to touch on that aspect very quickly, because we did already have a comment from the public as to that connection of Adamsville Road up in the Collector on the north side of this property, so I just wanted to give a frame of reference in the general plan, that the entirety of the land that is south of Adamsville Road, inclusive of those residential uses that exist today, is designated in the general plan as that innovation district land use. This is, again, the land use plan that provides for the base zoning districts that are allowed along the project. As was mentioned, there is a density cap, there's also an open space requirement in here, your Town Code requires fifteen, or pardon me, ten percent, we have fifty percent more than that as our minimum at fifteen percent, and as the plats come in, that will be documented and maintained throughout the process. The plat that's currently on file and in review and should be coming before you next month, that plat is for the first phase of the project that has twenty-three percent open space, so we are not designing two minimums here, we are exceeding the minimums, and you'll see that hopefully next month. But the parcel 26 that you see on that northern part of the screen, I just wanted to point that out again, that is due east of the property that the gentleman spoke to earlier about access and Collector. And I just wanted to just touch on that, that is in Phase Four of the development, it is commercial, it does not permit, that is one of the parcels that does not permit residential, and so this is going to be a many-year-from-now, likely, developed piece. The property is going to start development south of the 287. We are going to be working with him through the plating process, especially as we get north of the 287, on access and the issues that are concerning as to how that Collector that comes from the south connects to Adamsville Road, but I just wanted to give you guys some detail on that frame of reference as we talk through that. Again, the project is broken up into those development units, and as I just touched on the plat, it will be coming in for Phase One, which is shown on the screen with the number one, and the project is divided up from there. Again, that blue area that we were just discussing is development unit four. Again, I've got the development totals for the land uses, and that's where we break down the density per development unit that will ensure compatibility and conformance with the general plan, that has individual limits within those categories. And again, just representing the density limitations as to development unit four, which is the one we have been touching on. We do have additional limitations that will restrict certain of these parcels that allow for commercial, that also allow for residential, there are caps on the amount of residential that you can develop in those parcels to ensure a mixture of uses. So very important to get the residential densities around the area to support the commercial. It takes quite a number of proximate households in order to generate the demand necessary for retail. Just to give you a few economist factoids as to how trade areas are looked at from the various segments of the market. For a typical Fry's Safeway, eighty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand square foot grocery store within the trade area of between three and five miles, they want to see a population of twenty-two thousand people for one grocery store. If we're talking about a Walmart, that's more like ninety thousand, and once we get into Lowe's, Home Depot, the Coscos, that's north of a hundred and thirty-five thousand people within a trade area. So in order to support this commercial, we need to make sure that we maximize the residential around it to allow it to grow and come to fruition, which it will not without those rooftops. So this plan is a very balanced plan, again, it's all within the context of your general plan, and the densities that are provided are actually far lower than in your general plan as to what the maximums that would otherwise be allowed. So a few things from the last meeting, in the packet before you, your narrative has a provision date of February 8th, and that's... that's because we made a few revisions resulting from our conversation last month. There was a question from the chairman regarding gates and how gates would be reviewed and materials for that. We made sure to add that they will be reviewed with the subdivision plats and design review, the same as the wall plans. We clarified on page 30 that the HOA will maintain the community park. That was a catch, and we appreciate that. We also clarified as to the linear park and drainage improvements, that it's anticipated the HOA will own and maintain those, leaving the door open for another possibility, but that's outside of the zoning and more under the purview of the council at a later date. We also removed the reference to native soil as a trail surface, so they will all be improved surfaces. And then, we deleted, pardon me, the deviation allowance on the private streets specifically, and just said that private cross, private streets will be subject to the approval of the engineering staff, but that they have to meet the town's minimum requirements. We also changed some exhibits. A comment was made as to the distance from the driveway to the garage to accommodate a truck. We did add the note that we do require a minimum distance of 20 feet from the back of sidewalk to the face of garage on all of the exhibits as well. It was in the development standards, but we went and added it on the exhibits that you see here. Additionally, there was a comment questioning the connection of the linear park to the Florence Canal Trail. So we did bring that line down on this exhibit to show that that is a potential future And then there was a discussion about the trees and, you know, not wanting to cut L shapes or upside-down L's out of trees in the median, so we just went ahead and replaced that median trees with brushes and shrubbery, and then also moved the trees outside of the PUE, not in between the buffer and the sidewalk. So we moved those on all the cross-sections. And that's shown here. Again, this is all in your packet. As was mentioned, there are also stipulations that we had the pleasure of working on with staff. There are 35 of them, and we are completely in agreement with them and are happy to answer any other questions or cover any topics that we didn't cover thus far. As Jen mentioned, we do have our whole team here, and I'm certain I'll need some help from them at some point to answer questions, so appreciate your time.
Thank you. Commission members, questions, comments?
I would just like to go back and revisit the gentleman's question in the audience who has property in that connector, major connector in Adamsville. I'm not sure I understood your response, so that's Phase Four, I heard that. But regarding this being 500 feet from his front door, 200 feet? I'm sorry. 100 feet?
So, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Chairman, Vice Chair, the property, and is, I'm not able to use the pointer on the screen, and have you seen it? Can you see this on your screens, the pointer? No? Up on the screen above, his property, oh, and I've got the shakes apparently, should not be a surgeon. Whoa. Try the cursor. Oh, perfect idea. All right, now the cursor is on your screens. If you look down on your screens again, sorry, I've got the cursor that is a very steady hand. Right here is where the gentleman lives. And there is a separation, oh, it disappeared again. There's a separation between his property and our western boundary. Our collector will have to come up and arrive at Adamsville at a 90-degree angle. So how that road is designed, obviously, will be subject to engineering staff approval, has to comply with all of the town's requirements, but that will provide for a separation in between any uses and his property, because there will be a collector road there, which will also provide him with access to his property.
Of more than 100 feet?
The collector road is an 80-foot collector?
Yes.
You mean the distance, so the roadway would eventually be adjacent to his property? Correct. His property currently abuts Adamsville, but the collector road does not exist. That is the alignment for the future collector that would be on the east side of his property.
So maybe a clarification question. Is, is the right-of-way for the collector envisioned to be within your property, or are you looking to split the right-of-way between your property and Mr. Gordon's property?
I believe the alignment is entirely within our property. Yeah, all 80 feet of that is within our property.
Okay, so you're not looking for a dedication from him?
Correct.
We'll give you a time in just a minute, Mr. Gordon, during the, during the hearing, public hearing. Just a couple of questions, perhaps. I was able to catch Mr. Wilson at the end of one of the meetings and talk real, extremely briefly about the water campus and the wastewater lift station, and I noted in Phase One that the envisioned water campus is in that part, but the future lift state, or the lift station is actually in a different phase, but I guess you can't have one without the, without the other, so I'm assuming that that's going to be built as part of Phase One.
I'd like to invite our engineering team to come up and help with that question.
I just didn't see that where that's envisioned to be shaded in that tan color that indicates Phase One, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going with a smaller phased lift station.
There's the infrastructure list.
Sure. Darryl Wilson, Managing Principal of Hilgar Wilson, 2141 East Missouri in Phoenix, 85016. Yeah, thanks for asking for the clarification, Lonnie. The water campus will be immediately north of the circle that you see on the screen right now, and the, and the lift station will be on the northwest corner of the property in completely different locations.
And my northwest, are you talking right up against State Route 287 or even further up by Adamsville?
Yes, just on the north side. If you look at Development Unit Four, Phase Four, it is in the northwest corner along the, the green sewer line that you see there, a roadway.
Okay.
Yes, so not coincident with the water campus.
Right, yeah, wrong end of the grade. Yep.
And everything does gravity to that lift station, and from there, force mains to the treatment plant.
Okay.
Well, to a sewer line that goes to the treatment plant.
Just wanted to make sure, I thought that was the answer, but I wanted just to make sure, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Oberholzer, while you're up there, stipulation 11 says if any portion of the project is gated, internal roadways shall be privately owned and maintained to town standards by homeowners association. And I, the word constructed should all, should also be in there, right? That's what you had agreed to, they're constructed to town standards and then maintained to town standards? Unless something was worked out with the, I just wanted to make sure that clarification was in there.
So that clarification is in the PAD narrative. So the stipulation supplements what's in the narrative, and that is, can be found, I believe it's on page...
Yeah, I saw it in there as well, I think.
30. So, yeah, that, that language that staff provided here, and I certainly invite staff to supplement my response, but I believe the intent was for them to ensure that we understood through that stipulation that there would still need to be public utility and access provided in terms of town services over private roadways. So while the private roads are maintained by the HOA, the stipulation is meant to clarify just that obviously we would still need to have public utilities and fire and emergency services access over those roadways as well. The language in the P...
I was looking on page 34, I think, under Streets-Private. Okay.
Yes.
Alternative street sections will be subject to review and administrative approval by the community development or public works director or designee.
Correct.
Okay.
And that the private streets will meet or exceed the public street structural integrity.
Yeah, that's what got me confused, how does structural integrity relate to dimensions? I'm good now, okay. And? Okay. Anything else, commission members?
I'd just like to make a comment. It's a little bit to the side of this. I know we have Councilmember Bucelato on the line, and I had made this point in a previous session we had regarding further development on Adamsville. I know the council members, both Bucelato and Vice Mayor, have taken this back and requested a work session with the council, right? So I just want to reiterate, we understand this is creating quite a traffic issue, and I would urge Councilmember Bucelato to get that scheduled. I do not want to hold up any of these projects, but I have asked specifically for guidance from council on what the town is doing to step up to the town's responsibilities. I understand the developers have done their due diligence. I am not hearing that from the town, and I reference Hunt Highway. We knew when we approved all the PUDs on Hunt Highway, it would be a traffic overload, and somewhere in the last 15 years, we didn't make progress on the San Carlos irrigation or the railroad issue. Now we're up against it, and all I'm saying is that as you all are building out your phases, the town needs to be looking at what the town side of the road is and understanding what's coming, so we don't wait till we're already in this issue. We looked last year when we had the work going on on the Gila River Bridge. That was an ADOT project beyond our control, and then Coolidge went and did their work on Ataway Road, cutting off all our north-south access. This is a problem if we're going to put 7,000 houses out there, and people need to get to the 60, right? So I'd just like to say that to Councilmember Bucelato. Thank you for attending.
Okay, with that, if there's any more questions or comments, we'll, we'll open up the public hearing, and we'll take comments from anyone that would like to comment on the project, and you'll have three minutes. We'll take anyone that's here in the audience first, and then we'll go to folks that are online that would like to comment. So if anybody in attendance would like to comment, please come up. There's a young lady behind you, Mr. Gordon, we'll have her first, and then please tell us your name and where you live, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
I'm not good with words, but I'm Jasmine Lopez, born and raised Florence. I live here in town, but we do have a ranch right off of Hiscox Lane. I guess I'm concerned about our agricultural rights. Are we grandfathered in? We have livestock that they smell, they breed, they make noise. Are we gonna get, start getting complaints from HOA because our horses are doing their thing, our goats are giving birth, our roosters crow? So I guess I just want to check in on a lot of those things. We worked hard to get where we're at. I don't think it's fair that we gotta accommodate new neighbors when we originally went out there to get away from everybody, and now they want 15,000 people on our backyards. So, yeah, I guess that's a question, and I would like clarity.
Good, good question. Staff, do you want to, you want to tackle that one? You'll have to wrangle with that one.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission, and to Ms. Lopez, you're already there. You have grandfathered rights, it's that simple. You've, you're already, you know, have a functional use out there. It meets, you know, all the local codes, I presume it's yours. I mean, yeah, that we can't prevent people from complaining, but, you know, responses back to them will, can easily be that you pre-existed the development.
Is there something codifying that? Like, if we get enough complaints, can we just say, no, look, right here, boom, you're beat?
I'd have to get you, I'd have to get you some language.
I just want to make sure, because, you know, it's the typical, hey, we moved in next to, we moved in next to a racetrack, and now we're complaining about the racetrack.
Well, I can't, I don't have chapter and verse, but is it in our development code, the pre-existing uses? Yeah.
Okay, okay. Because, I mean, I'm all for the project, but that's a very valid concern.
We have a pre-existing use clause in there for a number of different reasons, and this would be one of them.
Good question, and now everybody knows the answer, so thank you for coming and talking to us this evening. Mr. Gordon? Go, please come up to the microphone so everybody can hear. There's folks online that are trying to hear too.
I'm sorry, Mary, can you restart the clock?
Oh, yeah, we could better give you your full three minutes here.
I only need a second. I, it just wasn't clear to me where that road was going to be placed. If that could be clarified, I didn't understand the chart on it. Thank you.
And I bet they would be happy to give you a diagram showing that, and the, Ms. Oberholzer is nodding her head, so hopefully you can get his address and send something to him, and everybody will be good on this one.
Yes, just for your record, we will do absolutely that.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I could also address that just briefly. We do follow very specific engineering standards, and what was spoken earlier, that we would have to hit Adamsville at a 90-degree angle is legitimate. It's all on their property. That being the case, since it's somewhat oblique right now, to commit at 90 degrees would act, would, could very easily pull the roadway itself a little bit further to the east of the property line, just in order to accommodate the geometry necessary to make the intersection.
Mr. Gordon, did you understand what that comment was? To make that geometry work, it might actually have to swing a little bit further off your property line than what you might think, so.
Quite an elevation, Ron.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to address this that's here in the audience before we open it up to online? Okay? Marcella, you want to invite whoever is online, please?
Yes. Mr. Mears, you're online.
Okay. Gordon, you have, you have your three minutes?
Thank you. So again, I, I oppose these big projects at one time, and I would love for somebody to clarify why we are willing to work with such huge projects at one time. I don't understand, and I know there's a lot of other residents that don't understand, why we are willing to work and permanently rezone something forever if it's truly not in the best interest of, of our town because of the roads. And Ms. Adams, I did bring it up at the last council meeting, how you guys have been voicing your concerns about the roads. Nobody's doing anything about them, nobody. And Mayor Walter said, oh, well, when I first joined council, we've wait, you know, it's been 12 years in the making to get that roundabout. That is not satisfactory at all, and this development is going to bring about 40,000 people and possibly 40,000 cars. Where's the roads? Okay? And you revisited and redid whatever in the best interest of the welfare of the public according to this report. The inadequate road situation is not in the best interest of, of us that, that's here. And, and residents around here, I know some of the last maps that we had looked at included some of these ranchettes that, you know, these properties that were around that clearly were not owned by this developer, so I hope everybody's got a good eye on where these property lines are. And heads up to these people surrounding these properties, these private people that are here right now. You know, Florence has already had two eminent domain cases because of these new developments with utilities and whatever, so everybody needs to be mindful what's happening. I'm not in favor of approving such huge projects at one time right now without adequate roads. It is not safe. And again, the safety of the land with these farmlands. Is anybody in the town looking after that? These farmlands have been sprayed with crop dusters for years, the nitrates, the fertilizers. How safe are these farmlands for yards once they become homes? And again, I think we need, I think we need retail and jobs and, and office space and other stuff before we need all this housing. But anyway, I'm not a fan of this big project right now at all. Without no roads around our entire town, it's, it's not cool, and it's not safe. That is all.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate that. Is that everybody online that would like to speak?
We have one more.
One more, okay.
Can you hear us? Councilmember Bucelato?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to say that to Ms. Adams, that I do hear you guys loud and clear. I am working on getting a date set for that possible work session. I have sent email and a follow-up email as well, and I'm just waiting to hear back on that. I do want to caution everybody, because some of the things I'm hearing tonight are valid concerns, the roads. I just think about wild horse estates and the issues that happen there, especially when it was time to go and annex that area with the horses and the livestock. So I think what everybody is saying are very valid points. We need to make sure that we address them clearly. And I will be getting back to you guys with the date on that meeting, because it is very much so needed. So I do agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good news, good information. We appreciate it.
And Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, council work sessions are typically scheduled for the second Monday of each month. And, I'm sorry? That's what I was told by the town clerk. But this is one of the upcoming topics. It will be the transportation system. That's what I've been informed of so far.
Great. Look forward to that. Okay. Any other comments from our viewers or from the audience this evening? All we've got? Yes, ma'am, please come up and identify yourself, and you have three minutes. Did we get the technical difficulties worked out? Okay, good.
I know I came in late, so I didn't get to see the map.
Please give us your name.
My name is Amelia Franklin, and I own a ranchette. And this development that is proposed wraps around my property on three sides. I have a well that I'm concerned about, that they're gonna tap in, and it's gonna go dry. I bought the property in 2019 to retire on, and now I don't even wanna be in this area if you're gonna make it into a big, huge city. You know, so, yeah, I'm concerned. I don't think any thought has been gone into, or I feel like, to the rent, people, why they moved out here in the first place. They want a little bit of property. They wanted to kinda get away from the big city. Instead, you're bringing it right onto their front door. And you know, the thing is, is I've lived in a lot of towns. I'm from San Diego, California originally. And whenever you start putting in apartment complexes, you can kiss your town goodbye. So I'm not on board with any of this. I think the other person's right. The development should be done first before we start packing in 40,000 people. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks for coming this evening. Anyone else? If not, we will close the public hearing. Okay. At this point in time, we can entertain a motion. And the motion would be to recommend approval or approval with conditions or denial. And this would then send it to council with that recommendation.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to send Florence 287 to the council for their consideration with the comment made regarding the major, the Collector A on Adamsville to look at moving it a little farther to the east, I believe.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion for a recommendation of approval by Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Copolongo with the stipulation that...
More of a comment than a stipulation. Correct. Is that what you said, Commissioner, Vice Chair?
The Collector A.
Yes, that that was more of a comment than a stipulation.
Well, I think that was a condition that that be taken care of as part of this, which it sounds like our applicant is happy to do that, so...
Okay.
Okay. Now, if I didn't mess that up too bad, all in favor, please say aye.
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 I think there were five of us that voted aye, Maricela. Thank you, Langley team, that came here this evening. We appreciate the interaction that we've had over these several meetings and the professionalism of your presentation, and you're willing to work with us and make things happen. So we're looking forward to a great project, and we'll see the start of that, it sounds like, next month. So, thank you.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, I believe this is scheduled for a public hearing with the council on March 18th. Now, that's the first reading of an ordinance to adopt, and then the second one would be April Fool's Day.
And that first reading will include another public hearing.
Very good. Okay, new business, 7A. Presentation and discussion. So this is just, this is going to be a discussion. There's no action to be taken this evening on 7A or 7B. But it's with the Ataway Crossings Planned Unit Development. And since they're kinda married up there close together, I think we're basically gonna be looking at that one and one called the northeast corner of Ataway and Hunt, kind of as a contiguous unit this evening, so...
Yes.
If we wanna do those both at the same time, I think that would save the confusion up here, at least with me, so...
Okay. All right. The first PUD that we have is the Ataway Crossing. Because this is just a work session, here we have the vicinity site. The site is a combination of two parcels. One has just been combined with another that was previously annexed in this past 2023. It is south of Anthem at Mayo Ranch, and it sits along Hunt Highway in the northwest corner of Ataway and Hunt Highway intersection. The owner is Ataway Crossing 147 LLC. We have a representative here from that group. We also have CBL Consultants, who are the applicants, and they put together this PUD. Ataway Crossing was originally part of the Mayo Ranch Planned Unit Development, but they were able to receive a letter to detach from that PUD and create their own for their own residential or in commercial use. Thus, they are looking to rezone for a planned unit development. This will help them meet the needs for the single-family residential housing in the region. And this proposal aligns with the suburban neighborhood, which is what it is designated in the 2022 general plan. This land is looking to be a blend of residential and commercial development. That commercial development will sit along Hunt Highway, and the residential will be set back. As the development progresses, each site plan will go through a preliminary plat process, and it'll be submitted and reviewed to be evaluated against the PUD as well as town requirements. The responsibility will fall on the developer to ensure that all of those requirements are met, and they also meet the design and construction. They're looking to do a Texas Ranch-style design to keep it separate from some of what's nearby. And this aim, this proposal aims to deliver a network of open spaces that not only connect within that development, but also look to connect to the PUD next door. There we go. And since we're just doing both right to the east, you have the next site for the northeast corner of Hunt and Ataway. It is a smaller triangle parcel. This is currently zoned RA-10, or rural agriculture. And they're looking to rezone it to the planned unit development. It was not part of the Mayo Ranch PUD. And CBL is the same consultant, and it's the same owner as well. The goal is, oh, we already did that, conceptual plan mostly looking at more commercial uses than on the other side. There'll also be landscape buffers between that and some of the possible residential within it. And there will be a cohesive architectural theme, like across the way. And this is mostly planned for future market conditions and the needs and services that are in the area. The proposal is meant to provide not only a diverse range of commercial uses, but also just uses that not only be there, but also for the community surrounding in that northern part of Hunt Highway. We do have the team here to present their own presentation.
I'll just put this whole screen here. All right. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing our case this evening. My name is Julie Vermillion with the applicant, CBL Consultants, located at 4550 North 12th Street in Phoenix. With me tonight is the project engineer, Doug Chubin. And thank you so much, Maricela, for the thorough presentation. Since you gave good background detail, I'll skip through the first few slides of our location general plan, which Maricela already mentioned is suburban neighborhood. The existing zoning PUD, as it was once zoned as part of the Mayo Ranch development to the north. We also have a portion of GR that has been, that was annexed last year. And then here is a copy of the recorded development agreement during that time when it was taken out of that Mayo Ranch community. This agreement was with Pulte Homes and the property owner. You could see it was in 2020. It permits 20.2 acres of commercial. Our current plan shows 13 acres of commercial. It permits up to 588 lots. Our current development shows 541 lots. And it permits a minimum of 15% open space. We're currently proposing that minimum requirement of 15% open space, but our site plan shows approximately 20% as currently planned. You can see that we didn't design to the maximums here. We really were thoughtful about our site design, and we considered what would be best for the land and the area, which is why we didn't quite hit those 588 lots. We're doing 541. That's also in compliance with the general plan designation of suburban neighborhood. Our proposed zoning is overall PUD for a cohesive master plan community. And then here's our conceptual land use plan. You can see that we have primary entry off of Hunt Highway into a nice roundabout with landscaping to give a sense of arrival into the community. We have commercial fronting on Hunt Highway. And then when you drive into the community, you immediately see the centrally located 6.5-acre Central Park area. So we think that's a really nice design that would be livable. And we have large open space corridors for trails. And then we have an approximately 70-foot-wide landscape buffer to the north between our lots and the existing homes. We also maintain drainage easement on the west for the wash. You can see that we have those 541 lots as our total yield. That's about 4.0 dwelling units per acre in compliance with the general plan. And then we're showing 13 acres of that future commercial. This is our circulation plan. You can see our trail corridors proposed looping the site. You can see we're showing the currently proposed realignment of Hunt Highway per the town's capital improvement plan. We've taken that into consideration with our design. We have planned access to the adjacent parcel to the east for future connectivity. And then, of course, signalization will occur if, when warranted by a signal warrant analysis and if required by the town engineer at that intersection. And then turn lanes will be provided as determined by the TAA and approved by the town engineer. You can see each of our street sections here, they are compliant with the town. They're town's standard street section, so we're not requesting any deviations or modifications. Here's our open space and trails plan. Again, we have those trails looping the site. We have that 6.5-acre park, and I'll go into more detail on that in upcoming slides. Each parcel will feature its own open space area, areas required for retention, drainage, and recreation. So you can see we have plenty of open space scattered throughout. Our entry monument is proposed off of Hunt Highway. And then we have pedestrian connection to those future commercial parcels. We just show asterisks there for the time being until those vertical development opportunities are known. Here's our park plan. So you can see we have this looping, meandering trail here that goes throughout the park. And we have fitness stations scattered around that trail. We also have a playground with a ramada and passive seating. And then we have open play areas on either side of the playground. So you can see, we've amenitized this to work for all ages. Here's a detail of that ramada and playground amenity. And then here's an elevation of what that ramada design could look like. And we also have a small elevation of what our activity nodes scattered throughout the site could look like. So we have activity nodes in most parcels. So at that bottom right corner, you see the turf area, park bench, shade structure, it's for play. And then we have the elevation of what that could look like on the left. Here's a character reference board of what those amenities would look like. We have the playground, swing set, fitness stations, benches. This is the intent for the character that we're working towards. This is our entry monument plan. So that was that nice roundabout coming off of Hunt Highway, giving entrance into the community. We have commercial access to the east and west. We have our landscaped areas, and then our entry monuments on either side. And I'll show you an elevation in a second. So this one might be a little difficult to see. It's a pretty small scale, but we have that elevation of what that roundabout would look like. And then we have blowups at the bottom of that right and left entry monument structure. You can see we're going with a limestone and slump block columns. We're showing metal accents there. This is our wall and sign plan. So we're identifying those community-themed walls. And then we're proposing view fence along the wash and northern perimeter. And then here are elevations of what those fences and walls will look like. You can see we have a mix of materials and colors for accents. And we maintain that limestone veneer theme throughout. And then I'd just like to touch on a few benefits that this proposal will have to the town. So we're establishing those 13 acres of commercial zoning along Hunt Highway. So that could allow for shops, neighborhood commercial services, things that we've been hearing from residents that they need and they desire. So we're planning to put that zoning in place for the opportunity for that to develop. And of course, it would provide potential job opportunities. So we're leaving the wash along the western side of the property. And then a development agreement will be finalized at the time of development with the school. Again, we have our activity nodes parked, hot lot, fitness stations throughout. So a bunch of new amenities for the town, as well as improvements on Ataway Road to the east. We're sticking with the town's standard section, so we'll propose multimodal transportation, bike lanes, sidewalks. And then we're committing to being upheld to these benefits through the town's plan review and permitting process. So per the town's current development impact fee schedule, we're estimating that this community will bring approximately $5 million in development fees to the town. As you know, that could go towards parks and recreation, police and fire, road improvements, and water and waste... and water and wastewater improvements. All right. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, or I can move on to the northeast corner if we want to skip over.
Yeah, let's just do them all at once.
Sounds good. All right. So this is the northeast corner of Addaway and Hunt. You know the location. So that existing zoning is RA10, and then there's a sliver of PUD at the northeast corner there. And we're proposing overall PUD for a cohesive plan here. And we're proposing a mix of complementary uses within this PUD. So I have a map here. We've just hatched in the commercially zoned properties in the area. And you can see that there's an underrepresented need for commercial development in this area of town. And we're proposing just to fulfill that need with this project. So our PUD doesn't specify the exact uses that will be developed on the site as an end user has yet to be determined. But we are, we do have a limitation and restriction on the uses that can be developed. So in our permitted uses table, we have carefully selected the uses that could be developed on this site. We made sure that they would be complementary to one another, as well as the surrounding neighborhood. This site plan identifies a few of those uses and what the site could look like at ultimate buildout. So you can see we have retail, small-scale retail, drive-throughs, car wash, an RV storage, a mix of uses that could be developed on this property under this PUD. In the center, labeled Phase 2, there's an existing homestead there. That is to remain in place throughout Phase 1. It could be developed within Phase 2 at the discretion of the property owner, or it could be left as is. You can see we have access provided on both Addaway Road and several driveways along Hunt Highway. And again, this illustration is conceptual, so it's just one of many options that could be developed on the site under the PUD. Here's our sign plan. We have a main entry sign planned at the intersection and a secondary entry sign planned along Hunt Highway. This will be subject to change depending on those development opportunities that come forward. You can see we have a conceptual plan for what Pulte Homes is doing north of the site at Anthem. Their current concept plan available online shows a significant buffer to the north from our property line to their roadway. We believe that that would help buffer any future proposed homes in that area from our commercial use. And then here's our circulation plan. It's identical to the circulation plan in Addaway Crossing. We have that connectivity between the two projects and then our driveway entrances off of Hunt Highway. Here's our concept signage and wall concept photos. And then we have a few character boards just identifying the type of development that is anticipated within this PUD. So it's including, but not limited to, several of these uses. All right. And I'll just touch on the benefits of this proposal. Again, we're establishing that much-desired commercial zoning, new infrastructure for the halfstream improvements on Addaway, and then a commitment to follow through with those benefits. All right. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have for either of these projects.
Great. Thank you very much. Commission members?
What's the timeline that your, the plan is affected?
Well, we currently don't have an end user onboard, so we would have to coordinate with the potential future home builders or potential future businesses interested in development on the site. So our timeline is not quite set yet.
Commissioners, anything else?
Maybe I'm just not catching something. Page four, under existing conditions, talks about the existing home that's there. It says the residence will most likely end up being absorbed into one of the future land uses. Has anybody had discussions with whoever owns that?
Oh, yes. So the property owner is working with us on this project.
Okay. It's just, it's one of those kind of like, do they know that this is happening?
They are absolutely aware.
And then just more of a comment, reading through, under, you know, part seven, we talk about development phasing and the different commercial uses. RV, truck, boat, storage, mini storage, and RV parking. Over the last year or so, very unpopular, those things in town here. I'd rather not have to go through that again if we can kind of like, you know, just because, imagine this room packed with very angry people.
Understood. We do currently have that as a permitted use. We're not sure if that would be a use that would move forward or not with this plan.
Yeah, I'm just urging against it. Nothing, I'm not, I'm a dog in that fight, but a large number of people don't like that stuff, so.
I'm not sure at the current town code amendments that we haven't approved yet, but I know that one of the amendments changed the zoning, so it is not allowed where it was intended before. I don't know if it affects the zoning here too.
Yeah, but pitchforks and torches were.
Yeah. We understand the amendments going through. The reason they're doing the PUD is so they can break away and become more flexible than what we have within our code, or what's going to be amended possibly in the next 30, 40 days.
Okay, I have a few questions or concerns or comments. An overarching question on Addaway Crossing, who are you marketing to with these, with these size home sites and whatnot? What demographic are you marketing to?
Well, this home size is standard, medium-density residential subdivision-sized lots, so it would be just the standard family home that you see all over the valley.
And I guess I ask that question because the homes to the north of here, and I actually live there, most of those will have 65-foot widths to them, or a lot of them do. And so I kind of get a feeling of what that demographic is, but then when you get to the narrower lots like this, you get more homes, and the affordability goes up as well. So I'm curious to see if you are, if this is intentionally marketing to first-time home buyers, or if, you know, I'm thinking of the future now.
Oh, absolutely. So that would depend on the home builder that we coordinate with in the future on what they're looking for. We do know that 65-foot wide lots are unpopular with home builders currently in the current market. So we did design this to accommodate some of the larger home builders in the area. And I believe it's the most popular traditional product that they're doing right now.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go home tonight, and my wife's going to ask me what happened. And I'm going to say that we looked at something that's going to incorporate modern Texas-style ranch design character. How am I going to explain that to her?
Well, that was our landscape architect's idea. So we're using Texas limestone as our main landscape character accent, along with metal and more modern materials to give it more of a modern theming. I believe that's strictly for the landscape character, since we don't have an understanding of what our home products will look like at this time.
Okay. I'll try my best.
That was their creative twist.
Okay. And staff, I have a question. What is our access? Do we have limited access or any access requirements for Hunt Highway? I mean, I know this, coming from my previous place where I grew up, there were standards on arterial roads, driveway spacing and things like that. What is that on Hunt Highway?
I'd have to defer that question directly with the town engineer as far as you're talking, excuse me, talking to retail accesses or...
Any access, particularly in the retail, I see that they've indicated several spots, and I'm wondering if that is allowed, and if we have a standard...
I would have to, I'd have to defer that question to the town engineer. We will try to get an answer for you before a public hearing.
If you wouldn't just send it out to all of us while you're, when you're doing that research. Because if we don't, I think we should, because of that major arterial, we should have some sort of access requirements for it. And the paper blurbed out something, the little free one that I got the other day that said there's going to be a circle K at this location. Do you know anything about that?
Oh, I don't personally, I have not been informed of that.
Maybe it's in the corner of Addaway.
We do have a, we do have a submittal for pre-application for a new convenience store, but a completely different location.
Yeah, I do want to update on that newspaper article. So Commissioner Pro did send it to me, and I checked with our upper management staff, and there was actually an error in the typing of that paper. The land swap was actually for 79 and Hunt, not for Addaway and Hunt.
Oh, okay. Okay, very good.
That's much better.
That was a curiosity question.
That's, yeah.
Okay. And I'm just going to turn through the submittal here. So on page four, under circulation, Addaway Road, Hunt Highway, says provide southbound approach with one left turn lane with 125 feet of storage and one shared through right turn lane. Now, what, what the exhibit F shows is that this is a minor collector, but what you're describing there is a major collector.
All right.
If you're going to have a center turn lane, you've got to have a major collector dimensions.
And are you referring, I'm sorry, I'll pull up the slide again so we can visualize...
Pull up exhibit F.
All right. So Addaway Road...
Yes, right there.
I believe we're showing that as a minor collector, most likely based off of our research and possibly the general plan map.
Well, that's what you show it at, but what you describe is a major collector because you've got a turn lane in it and a minor collector doesn't have a turn lane.
All right. Well, we can, we can revise that accordingly.
Yeah, if you would, just make this so that they complement each other instead of are at, they're opposite of each other. And then there are terms in here under circulation that I'm not quite sure what they mean. West driveway, Hunt Highway, east driveway, Hunt Highway. I don't see those shown anywhere on here.
All right. We can clarify exactly which ones those are and label those on our exhibit.
That's what's nice about having, being able to do this discussion so that when you come back, you can...
Yeah, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Make sure we understand all those things. On page seven, under your cross-section for major collector roadway, and this gets back to what the former applicant talked about, you've got trees in a very narrow planting area between paths and sidewalk and the edge of the street. And when you plant trees there, you tend to have that L-shaped cut done in them by 18-wheelers, garbage trucks and other things that go through the area. So we need to move those trees back or do something. Plus, they tend to heave sidewalks and curb and gutter as well.
Absolutely. We can make sure that's revised to shrubs.
The, well, the trees are nice, you've just got to move them back.
Yeah, I completely understand.
Okay. And then on page 11, you reference water facilities and wastewater facilities, but I don't see these anywhere on the development plan.
Oh, we currently, we have water and sewer reports prepared that were submitted.
And not the report, I'm just, where are they on the development plan? There is no location shown on, on any of your exhibits of where those are going to be built at.
I don't believe that we've identified, oh, we do not have a site layout prepared for, for the water and sewer utility.
So next time you come see us, why be sure to put those in there and flag them so that we know where those are at?
Absolutely.
And just as a reminder, of course, you'll see those on the preliminary plats. They'll have to be formalized and engineered at that point.
Right. Yeah. It's, you know, since they call them out, it'd be nice to see them on an exhibit. Okay. Now, one of these exhibits shows your activity nodes, which I think is a great idea, but I'm a little bit concerned because you got to, if I scaled it correctly, a piece of turf that at its largest dimension is 30 feet and in one direction and 25 feet the other direction, that's not big enough to do anything on except look at or have your animal relieve itself. Because there's no, there's not big enough to play on or do anything like that. You can't throw a ball or do anything.
Understood. We can think of an alternate amenity for that area.
Yes, yeah. If I'm, if we're going to have turf, let's make it usable. And then on page 22, you have a section called Walls and Fencing. Previous applicant talked about this too. Could you put in something there about gate standards? And this gets back to the problem that I see quite often. We have nice walls, good masonry walls, and then a developer puts in a gate and puts unpainted wood in it, which looks good initially, but about a year down the road, it just looks terrible. So if we can have, if we can have walls and fencing standards, let's have gate standards as well.
Absolutely. Now, this, this will not be, this will be an open community, but we can make sure that if, if any gates were to be placed there, they would follow through with those standards.
Every home will have a gate.
Oh, you mean for the products? Okay. Yep, absolutely.
On exhibit E, which is the conceptual land use plan, there is the Anthem K8 Elementary School, one-third of a mile north of this. Right now, the way we have this set up, we're basically kind of cutting off access, but you know those children are going to want, and their parents are going to want them to go in a safe way. So I'm, staff, I'm hoping we can encourage an access, and it looks like almost a natural access point that aligns with the middle park north-south. You've got an open space there to bring some sort of a path over into the Anthem Development so that those children can bike and walk to school. And so that residents up there, when you guys get some awesome dining establishments down here, we can ride our bikes down instead of having to drive down to get dinner. How's that? Okay?
Perfect. We'll work with staff and see if that's, there's an opportunity for that.
On exhibit G, so the way that you set this up, it sounds like you're already in discussions with the Magma Flood Control District about how to deal with that wash that comes through there that's part of their purview.
I know that they have been notified of our development. All right. We will be working with them through the preliminary design process.
Yes, I, I would bet that some tier of these homes are going to be included as the Anthem area as part of that flood control district and will be taxed by being part of that flood control district.
All right.
The other one is, you said you're going to build, what, 470? How many lots you're looking at here?
541.
Oh, 541. So there's 541 lots. And while I really like that park, the, the two turf areas, when I scale them out, measure about 50 by 100, the rectangular ones, and there's one ramada and 541 lots, it seems like that's a disproportionately small amount of playground for the amount of children that's going to be in this development. One ramada and two small play areas. I like the concept of your track around the six-and-a-half acre park. It might be better to put it in those two north-south areas that you have designated for fitness tracks and things like that. And then get some more playable turf in there so that these residents have a place to go to that's close by. I like the way, you have, you have good proximity, walkable distance to all the residents. There's just not much there. If you, two families show up and get dibs on play areas, then there's 539 of others are going to be excluded, basically.
Understood.
One ramada.
We are planning ramadas in several of our activity nodes, but, but I understand your point. We can take a look at that park and see what we can do to upgrade. point. We can take a look at that park and see what we can do to upgrade it.
Yeah, just, there's a lot of talk, and you probably heard it this evening, by residents who are concerned just about good park facilities for people to play at. I think this is a real good concept, I just need a little more of it.
Absolutely.
Just me thinks. And that was all my comments on that part of the, on Addaway Crossing. And on the other one. Sorry. I tapped some things and didn't tap some of the others. Okay, this would be, and I just looked, did it on the sign plan, Exhibit, Exhibit H. If you get some really stellar dining establishments down in here, you might want to think about a pedestrian bike access into the Anthem as well, to encourage people to come down and, you know, have dinner there, shop and whatnot, and then just getting back to the comment about access and driveways and minimum spacing on driveways and things like that.
That's a great point. We'll coordinate with staff on that.
Okay. And that's everything that I could think of at this point in time. Commissioners, any, any other comments or questions or concerns?
I'm just so glad you're on our side.
Looks like good project. We appreciate coming out here and taking the time, and I recognize that the applicant is back here, or the landowner is back here, too. I don't know if there's any words of wisdom from, from him this evening?
I don't believe so.
You're good? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just please give us your name, so we...
Kevin Peterson, I'm sorry, 3369 East Queen Creek Road, Gilbert, Arizona. I love your recommendations on connectivity to the Anthem project, but as far as I know, the Anthem project is a closed community, so that request would have to be approved by Polte to allow an opening. We are 100% behind an opening for connectivity for pedestrian traffic, but as far as I understand, the way Polte is designed, it's a closed community with a wall, and at the moment, there would be no access unless you all made that request through Polte and was able to get that done. It would be out of our control. I like the idea.
Yeah, because those kids are going to want to go to school, and parents are going to want a safe place for them, so.
No, I think it'd be a great idea if you could get Polte to agree to a opening, or two.
So we'll lob that to staff.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, well, that was a nice work session, good discussion. We appreciate everybody coming out to visit with us and bringing that feast of knowledge. Anything else?
Anything else here?
Okay. And Mari Sill, do we know when they're coming back to visit with us again?
No, I've been working, I'm going to work with CVL on a schedule, so we can start doing public notices for the next hearings and readings for PNC and council.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number eight, Western Crossings Update, Scheduled Public Hearing for Code Amendments and Home Tour 2024 Recap.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the first one, because I've been struggling for the last hour and 45 minutes to remember the word, thermoplastic. Western crossings, if you notice, the, all the barricades are down, right-turn-in lane, left-turn-in lane, and all that stuff is open. It was like, it was supposed to be, if you notice, it was, if anybody's been out there, the striping was all painted on the road. ADOT has a required wait time before thermoplastic is put down, you know, to add that little bit of dimension and longevity to the striping. I believe that that deadline, not deadline, but wait period was up today. So the thermoplastic may be gone down already, but I know that they were trying to put it down as soon as possible. And all that does is enhance the striping, adds a certain amount of reflectivity to it for night driving, things of that nature. So that was the last piece of the puzzle, based on your conditional use permit, or temporary use permit for the model homes. So we, staff is in a position to issue building permits out there. And Mari can do the rest.
So co-amendments, the public hearing came before Town Council, and the first reading as well. It is moving on to the second reading on Tuesday night, as Monday is a holiday. So the Town Council will be on Tuesday night, and that'll be the final reading and action for these code amendments. Something Town Council did, as that we do, is we remove the group homes definition, do further research into the types, into stipulations, and just do more research on what other communities are doing. So the code amendments that are going forward are everything that you had seen minus the definition for group homes.
That's good.
As for the home tour, despite it being 43 degrees outside and raining for half an hour, we had a very decent amount of people still come out and join the town in the event for the home tour. I would like to thank the homeowners who opened up their residences, Gary Bronzo and Debbie Navati. They took the time out of their day to clean, and especially for Bronzo, for bouncing back after his condition. And I am very grateful for them for doing what they did, and that day, I think, went very well.
Very good.
Seems like last year there was rain also, wasn't there?
It was no rain, but it was very cloudy and windy. And the sun came out at 3:00 PM, like this year again, but this year, I think, was a little colder.
Okay. Number nine, Call to the Commission, Current Events. The only one that I know coming up is the Downtown Car, I wish I could remember the name, and I won't be here.
The Car Show.
Yeah, Car Show. Isn't there a name that's attached?
I believe it's a historic car show, or classic car show, something like that.
I've heard a lot of really good things about it, unfortunately, I'll be out of town. And when is that again?
That is this Saturday. I don't remember the time. I believe it's from 9:00 to 3:00. At the same time, the town will also be doing a pooch party, and I think there's another event that's happening on the same day. So it's going to be a very busy time within the downtown.
I heard there's a bike run on Sunday, the prison run.
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, I know that happens, but I know it's this Sunday.
Yeah, this Sunday.
Yeah. And that's bike as in motorcycle, right?
Yes, and very loud bikes.
Very loud bikes.
And I want them all to come and see me on the Riverbuck.
Anything else?
Well, I just wanted to commend Farstar, because I know we gave them enough grief about doing that turn lane, and I just came through there tonight. I think it's beautiful, and I think it really helps the people that already live in Centennial, right, to make that left-hand turn going in. And I'd like to thank the Home Tour Committee, Mari and Bebo, and the committee, Barb Kelly. I was at the museum, and we had visitors right at 10:00, straight through to 4:00, and I have never heard so many positive comments. So despite the weather, despite having fewer homes than we normally have, people absolutely loved Florence. So you did a good job.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Copolongo, your favorite motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Copolongo, seconded by Commissioner Pro, to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, 5-0. Thanks, everybody.